Two o'clock, so we can start now, or I guess everyone is here. So, good afternoon and welcome to Health and Wellbeing Board Meeting today. Worcestershire Health and Wellbeing Board. And I appreciate all of you making this time possible to have this meeting. So, my name is Councillor Siton-Bell. I'm CMR for Health and Wellbeing, and I have all the other team. And thank you, everyone, for joining us. Just to say, that agenda is quite packed today. So, in the presentations, keep it concise if you can, and then so that we have good time for any discussions, debates, or feedback or comments we might have. Also, just to remind, if you stop speaking, then switch off your microphone. And also, if you can kindly say your name, so that, you know, you're addressed correctly during the debate. And I guess we are happy to start now. And Kate is going to read out the apologies and substitutes to start with, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We've had apologies from Dr Sarah Raystrick, Simon Adams, but we have Julia Neale with us, Vic Allison, Councillor Juma Begum, Chris Roberts, but we have Pete Sugg with us, Simon Trickett, and Gary Woodman. Thank you.
Thank you. And any declarations of interest to be made at this point? None, thank you. Any public participation we have today? So, that's done, so we have no public participation. And now, just moving on to confirmation of minutes from the last meeting, so which is on the pages from one to eight. So, if no comments or any objections, then we can go ahead and sign those minutes off. Happy with that? And thank you. Thank you. So, moving on the agenda. So, next we have about the Joint Local Health Wellbeing Board Strategy Annual Update. So, I will invite Dr Tania Richardson, who is a consultant in public health. And this is the work which public health does with all the stakeholders and partners. So, and this is the fourth year we are moving on, and that's the update we are going to have from you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Bell. So, I'm Tania Richardson, Consultant in Public Health at the local authority. I'm also Clinical Lead for Social Change at the ICB. It's a privilege to present this three-year update for the Health and Wellbeing Strategy, which, as Councillor Bell says, is a partnership strategy which is delivered by every member of this board. And I hope that you'll be pleased to see the contributions of every organisation on the board reflected in this update that we brought to you today. So, the strategy was launched by the Health and Wellbeing Board three years ago with an overarching priority of good mental health and wellbeing, backed up by action on the broader determinants of good mental health and wellbeing that we all need. So, healthy living at all stages of life, safe, thriving, healthy homes, communities, and places, and quality local jobs and opportunities. And what we summarise in this update is that this priority is still the right priority for the people who live and work in Worcestershire. And we know that because we have, as we committed at the beginning, continued this ongoing drumbeat of engagement with our local communities. So, in one of the documents that we presented today, you'll see the summary of that engagement that goes on by all partners across the system, which confirms that mental wellbeing is still a priority for us to tackle. But also, what we want to emphasise in this report, that it is not so much mental wellbeing as an individual, but as part of a connected community. And I hope that you'll agree that the case studies, that the examples in this report truly accentuate the power of community, the power of connection, and the power of partnership. We go through in the report a lot of the successes that we're really proud of that have taken place over the last year. Some of those are summarised in the public-facing document, which really take hyper-local stories from our local communities, where we've seen great examples of success in improving mental wellbeing in those communities. I'd just like to pick out a few in the main report across those main priorities. So, for example, Healthy Worcestershire, which is now in place in 30 venues across the county, where over 99% of participants report an improvement in their health and wellbeing. To the work in our priority neighbourhoods across the county, and where particularly the work in Westlands was nominated and received an LGC award this year, and has seen a 7% reduction in emergency admissions to hospital. This approach has been rolled out across the county, seeking to really empower local communities to work with communities, for them to come up with the solutions to improving their health and wellbeing. And then finally, to mention the Workwell Programme delivered by the ICB, the subject of the next agenda item, but that really critical link between good work and mental wellbeing. We talk in the paper about the strategic context and the work of partners. So important to acknowledge here, the partners in the room, the VCSC, NHS Partners, district colleagues, and critically elected members, and the role that everybody can play in improving mental wellbeing. We finally, in the paper, look ahead to the next year. We have taken stock of the successes we've reported, and we've highlighted some particular areas that we feel should be a focus for the fourth year of the strategy. We talk about a focus on healthy weight and nutrition, on the two-and-a-half-year check and good level of development, on youth provision and domestic abuse. We critically talk about the importance of the new neighbourhood health plans that will be coming, which again, really emphasise the power of connection and communities that is going to be necessary to ensure that all recipients of health and care services are connected to their wider communities and to the wider health and wellbeing offer that we talk about in the rest of this paper. That's all I want to say by way of introduction, but I've just got to ask if there's other things that Lisa might want to highlight before we open up for questions and contributions. Thank you.
Thanks, Tania. Really good overview. So, yeah, just to reinforce, this is the work of everyone in this room, local authority, including public health and social care, NHS colleagues, and of course, of great importance is the community and voluntary sector. I think a couple of things I would highlight is what some of the data is showing at the moment is a reminder that Worcestershire is not a homogeneous place. And we've got some areas achieving really good outcomes, some areas not achieving outcomes to the extent that we would like. And this really reinforces the need to do what we are all doing, which is very focused work on the ground in specific areas. For example, we've discussed before that Redditch is an area that is experiencing some poorer outcomes than average at the moment. And I went to a brilliant meeting last week of all the local voluntary and community sector groups, from those working with children right through to those working with adults, to discuss the next stages of our Priority Neighbourhood Development Programme, which, as you know, focuses resources to specific areas where people are experiencing poorer outcomes. So, I think that's the first thing I draw attention to. There's been great progress, some of which is shown here, some of which which isn't. For example, we've seen a reduction in childhood obesity in our year sixes at the end of primary school, and we've seen a reduction year on year there that is actually double the national and regional reduction, but so much more to do on that. I think a big priority for us going forward is child development, which makes the recent investment in programmes such as family hubs ultra-important. We need to accelerate the development of children so that when they start school, they're ready to learn, they're equipped to learn, they're equipped to benefit from that education. So, some big priorities going forward, but as ever, we will always strive to address those priorities with local people, rather than just doing our work to local people. We'll take a community development and empowerment approach that puts our residents in our communities as part of the team, not passive respondents to our work. And if you'd been in Woodrow with me last week, you would have saw the energy and the enthusiasm there to work with us and co-create a new future for those areas around improved health, mental health, and social wellbeing. So, yeah, shall we hand over for any discussion or questions?
Hello, Councillor Bowen. I'm the CMR for Children and Families. I think the development of family hubs is brilliant, so that's one thing that I'm very excited about. I think they have the potential to really be quite transformative in some of our towns in Worcester. One of the things I'm really excited about, and I wonder what your views would be on this, as you may have heard, in a few weeks' time, we'll be launching our revolution in fostering. And one of the areas that I can see family hubs kind of joining in that will be around that peer support, parenting support, and early access to services. I wonder what your views on that might be.
Well, firstly, to echo what you've been saying, Councillor Bowen, about how important fostering is, obviously, to children, but also to our wider community, through everything from wellbeing to resources. And of course, the big challenge with fostering at the moment is not just about recruitment, but it's about retention. And in order to retain foster carers, as you've said a couple of times, we need to support foster carers' wellbeing. And the family hubs, as you say, are right in the heart of communities, and we'll make sure, as you develop your plans around fostering support and further develop what we offer, we'll make sure the family hubs are part of that offer and able to host and amplify whatever is put in place. They're in the right place, they're trusted, family hubs are trusted by the local community, and we've seen what they've done for so many different areas of work. I'd love to see them have a really positive effect on fostering support and retention.
Thank you. Councillor Shirley Webb from Bromsgrove. I haven't got a question, I just wanted to say that the Healthy Worcestershire Programme has worked really well in Bromsgrove in all of the five... What's the word I'm looking for? Sorry, I've got a brain freeze. Locations, that's it. And it really helps with the preventative programme, and also social isolation, more importantly, for a lot of people. It's brought a lot of people together, so I'd just like to thank you for that and hope it keeps going. Thank you.
That means a lot. Thank you, Councillor Webb. And of course, Healthy Worcestershire is not something public health has done alone. We've had the help of so many elected members like yourselves in not only helping to develop, but championing the Healthy Worcestershire Programme. Healthy Worcestershire brings together a whole range of support, from physical activity, strength and balance, to help people prevent falls, right through to healthy eating, and even helping people avoid crime and scams by helping them become more digitally included and learn about what's happening. And tying all that together is the social part. Whenever I visit a Healthy Worcestershire session, it always feels like a youth club for adults, because everyone's having fun, everyone's playing games. And when Professor Chris Witty came to see the Healthy Worcestershire Programme, that was one of his comments, and he felt that that model should be rolled out further. And we do have people coming from other areas. We had someone actually from our neck of the woods, Councillor Webb in Warrington, come to talk to us because they want to do something similar. So, yeah, and a big thank you to NHS colleagues, elected members, voluntary sector colleagues, and of course, our amazing provider, Solutions for Health, who deliver that on the front line, have been absolutely amazing. And we've seen, you know, it all speaks in the data. 99% of people who have attended Healthy Worcestershire are reporting at least one health improvement, many of them reporting several. So, we couldn't be more delighted, but we'll keep expanding, we'll keep pushing it, and keep selling it.
Thank you. Any more questions, please? Thank you.
Hi, yeah. So, Dave Mahaffey, I'm the ICB Director of Strategy. It's not a question, it's an observation really, and just welcome the statistics that you quoted on childhood obesity at year six. I mean, we know in the health service that we're really trying to get a focus on prevention. The government's 10-year plan talks about a movement from sickness to prevention, and healthy weight is clearly a really important part of that. And if we're going to get what we call, Lisa and I have talked for ages about getting upstream with prevention, then getting upstream in healthy weight for children is about as upstream as you can get, isn't it? So, great to see that, that particular statistic being quoted, because as you say, it's not the national picture, is it? It's better than the national picture, so that stands us in good stead for the long term.
Yeah, spot on, David. And, you know, we obviously have a focus across the life course, you know. For example, Healthy Worcestershire, the Councillor Webb mentioned, is maybe more geared towards adults, maybe older adults. But the recent investment in children's support in the family hubs, more into health visiting, more into the school grants, which have been a real revelation and amazing to see the innovative ideas that school teams have come up with to improve health. All that stuff is at almost the vanguard of cost-effectiveness, because we know if we get that right. We've got a lot of work to do on childhood obesity, on child development. Claire is going to be leading a really quite intensive programme around child development, because as you say, David, if we get that right, that affects Worcestershire positively now, but also long into the future.
Any more comments, please? Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Dr Richardson. So, it was really good. I just want to make a few points there about in this report. So, there are some really powerful statements there and good figures, which show upward trend in the work, you know, which all the partners in public health have been doing. And what stuck me is that family and the community is at the centre of this, which the designing of these projects which we are doing. So, that's really good, because we are trying to engage the community to build on these projects. I've had the chance to visit Brookside Family Hub, and it's amazing to see that how committed those teams are and the tremendous work they are doing. And they're also extended, they're, you know, working on weekends, hours in the communities, how they are engaging. And it was quite a busy day, I mean, to see the families there, children, mum and dads. And there were some positive stories there. We've had the chance to interact with one of the mums, who has been going to this family hub during her both children, and now she's also volunteering there, so that's a big contribution. So, these family hubs, the important aspect here is that it's a social connection. So, the families meet each other, they learn from each other, and then they develop together, so which is really, really positive. And then, same with our grants, our small help, that grant which goes from the public health to the schools, for example, sensory room we managed to see, and then there are children working with animals. So, that's all very positive efforts to develop that resilience and mental wellbeing. So, thank you, everyone, who's been involved in this, and especially our public health team, our partners, stakeholders. And to put together this report, our directors, Sam Collison, Dr Richardson, and Lisa, everyone, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It's a bit of a double act on this one between Judy and myself, which I think just goes to demonstrate how well the NHS and the council work together in this part of the world. Judy works for the council in the skills team, I work for the ICB, and we've worked hand in hand on developing this particular programme and this strategy. It's also an example of getting upstream for prevention as well, because we recognise the kind of the pivotal importance between health and work, and work and health. They drive each other, they're kind of self-fulfilling in that sense. So, this particular piece, DWP launched the programme Workwell about 18 months ago. People may have heard of it. It was a programme that was intended to help people overcome health-related or disability-related barriers to work. So, ICBs were invited to apply for the funding that was available nationally. We applied, and we were one of 15 of the 42 ICBs that were successful in getting that funding. And for us, in the kind of first phase of the programme, it was worth about £2.5 million of additional investment locally. Subsequently, government have announced it's been rolled out for another three years, still waiting for kind of final details on what the budgetary implications are, but we anticipate it's something similar. So, supporting people through this programme for at least another three years, which I think is excellent news. So, as I say, we were approved, and the service is now live across the county, and people can access it, self-refer, they can go to their GP, get it, they can access the service through the Job Centre Plus, et cetera. But one of the conditions or requirements of being a Workwell pilot was that local partners needed to come together to produce a work and health strategy, and that's what we've worked on. So, we work with partners across all agencies, I would say, Chamber of Commerce, local government, voluntary sector, health, you know, everybody's been involved in developing this strategy. Judy's going to talk through the detail of that. So, where we are with the strategy at the moment, we've developed it as a pretty final draft, I think, isn't it? It went to the ICB Board last month, who approved it and endorsed it. It's also been to the Herefordshire Health and Wellbeing Board, because obviously, the ICS we cover, covers both counties, and they supported and endorsed it. And it's before you today, hopefully, to get support of the Worcestershire Health and Wellbeing Board, so we can go on to publish it and then begin implementing it, or carry on implementing it, rather than begin implementing it, because we're already doing many of the things. So, that's it for me by way of introduction. I'm going to hand over to Judy now, who's going to talk through some of the detail, and then we'll welcome any questions.
Hello, I'm Judy Gibbs. I'm Head of Service for Skills and Employability at the County Council. As David said, I work with the ICB on the health and work piece. So, this strategy kind of started earlier this year, and it's designed itself to respond to a number of different factors. So, the first being the rising levels of sickness absence that we're seeing. So, we have currently around, we issue around 12,000 fit notes every month, which is obviously an alarming amount, an alarming amount. And we have 22,600 people in Worcestershire who are inactive due to health conditions, so they're not working. And in Herefordshire, that's about 6,500. It's been designed to respond to the gaps that we know are there in terms of inclusive employment practices, but also to address that fragmentation that David mentioned in terms of the sort of different strategies that we have across health services, but also employment services as well, and to respond to the national policy drivers. So, I'm sure you'll be aware that the government launched its Get Britain Working Strategy in November last year, and this is very much part of that, and it's actually helped us to be, I would say, a little bit ahead of the curve nationally with this piece of work. And then, the government's new national employment programme for people with health conditions called Connect to Work, which rolls out in Worcestershire and Herefordshire in October this year. So, the vision behind the strategy is to have a dynamic workforce that drives a vibrant local economy, where everyone has access to meaningful employment, where health and wellbeing needs are prioritised, and residents with health conditions and disabilities are supported to thrive in employment. So, the structure of the report, it takes you through kind of where we are now. It has a look at all the current policies, including that of the Health and Wellbeing Strategy, and kind of, I suppose, is looking to bring all of the key points from those into one place. It sets out our intent, our four strategic ambitions, and then it comes up with kind of what the success measures will be, and what our key performance indicators are. So, just to talk you really quickly through the ambitions, so there are four. So, the first one is about inclusive work environments. The second one is about creating supportive pathways for people into employment. The third one is about providing that prevention piece, so actually providing early support for those people in work who are recognising that they may have some challenges around their health conditions. their health conditions. And then the fourth one is very much about actually that piece about enhancing the collaboration, not just, not just between the local authority and the ICB, but also more widely across the Department for Work and Pensions as well. So just to talk you through kind of each one of those ambitions a little. Okay, so the first one, which is about creating inclusive workplaces, I think what you have to remember is, you know, this is very much a kind of triangle of support, really. It's about having the programmes in place, and it's about having the individuals who want to move in or who want to retain their work, but it's also very much about the employers. And both Worcestershire and Herefordshire have a significant amount of small and medium employers, who perhaps won't have some of these HR processes in place that we as large organisations would have. So actually, the first one's very much about that area of work. It's about increasing our messaging to employers around the benefits of healthy workforces, and what their role within that can be, and what the gains are to them. It's about supporting them to understand the services that are out there, like for instance, Work Well Live Better, that they can hook into. It's about with DWP, increasing the number of employers that are disability confident across the two counties, which actually isn't as high as you would expect it to be. And perhaps taking one step further than that, and thinking about how we create kind of good employment metrics behind a charter for the two counties. The second one is about the individual support, so support for individuals where they're looking to move into employment. This is really an area where there is some support available already. We need to kind of simplify that landscape for residents, so that actually the right resident accesses the right service at the right time. We have fairly limited resources, so again, we need to learn how, and we need to work together to use those more effectively and efficiently. And we need to understand where the gaps are and what we will need. So working with the Worcestershire, Get Worcestershire Working Plan, and the Get the Marchers Working Plan as well, to kind of let the government know about what are our gaps and what do we need to support our area. The third one is about prevention. So this is very much about the Work Well Programme, and ensuring that the Work Well Programme is rolled out. You know, as David said, we've already got the, we've already got an extension of funding, which is great news, and we want to make sure that that works really well. It's also about supporting our employers to have more effective absence policies and processes, in order to ensure that individuals are given the right support as they start to perhaps wobble within work environments. And raising the profiles of all of the programmes that you will all be so familiar with, that the public health teams across the two counties deliver. And then the last one's more about us as, us as the sort of system, and how we collaborate and work more effectively together. So one of those, and Work Well's a really good example of this, is actually at the point when that money comes down the line to us as an individual organisation, having a conversation with the other organisations to look at what's going to work most effectively. It's also about understanding what actually are our roles, what can we do to influence this agenda individually? And then being best practice as well, so actually being those disability confident and inclusive environments for our employees. And then finally, it's about social value, so actually using our social value practices and our procurement to enable those environments across those organisations we work with. The actual health and work strategy has a governance board, and it will be governed by that board, but of course, we're more than happy to come back to this board with future updates. And that's really it, to be honest. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I invite any questions, comments, please? No comments? Okay, thank you. So thank you for that report, and I just want to make a couple of points there. Of course, I mean, we all agree that everyone needs to have a chance to be in a meaningful employment and chance to work, and especially if someone has illness or disability. So these efforts which we are making and objectives going forward, four of those objectives, key performance, so we are looking to achieve that. Also, the other thing is rehabilitation. For example, people coming out of, life gets in the way, you know, you come back maybe from prison, or because I see as a clinician in my clinic, people coming out of prison, they are struggling to get their prescriptions, they are struggling to get housing. So those things obviously, you know, link in with this as well, that of course, they also need to be facilitated, how they get back to meaningful employment and have that chance in their life. Sick notes is another issue there, and I understand that, you know, the primary care and the healthcare providers, we need to work very closely. It's a national issue. But what we see, I can just share my experience as a clinician as well. So sick note from, for example, from emergency medicine, or people come at the urgent care at the front door. So self-certification is something which comes in five to seven days, when you have an injury, for example, and then the sick notes come in. But sick notes are signed off there itself, whereas I think sick note comes on a very specialised level. For example, you've got a fracture, and then you go and see an orthopedician or a specialist, that's where sick note should be coming in, really, because that's, that's the time where you assess that how long you're going to be off for, what is the treatment, are you going to have a surgery, is this a good outcome, or are you going to end up with some sort of disability or things like that? So I think there is a lot of potential for training onto the healthcare side as well as far as these sick notes are concerned, because it's not, it's not the problem only onto the population side, because the awareness is less from that. Of course, they are seeking help, so I think the more responsibility lies on the healthcare side, that how that system, which is already in place, that how they're going to make best use of it. So I would say responsibility is less onto the resident side, because they are just seeking help, and they, they rather would act as they are guided in the system well. So thank you for that report, yes. Yes, David, go first, so, sorry.
No, it's fine, I mean, Lisa, you'll probably come in on some of the points I want to make anyway. Yeah, I mean, the sick note thing is a really interesting one, actually, because what we, what we know is that the process needs to be tightened up quite a lot, particularly in primary care, and we, we have got some additional money, again, on top of this, to do another DWP-funded piece of work, looking at specifically sick notes or fit notes, as they should be, you know, what are you fit to do, et cetera. So there's more work we can do on that and come back at a future date to talk about that. But the other thing I wanted to mention really was linking it to the health and wellbeing strategy. I think the last time I looked at the numbers, and you may have more accurate figures than I've got, but it was something like 40% of people who were accessing the Work Well Service were doing so because of a mental health-related health barrier to work. And that was by far and away the single biggest reason. I think the second area was musculoskeletal, kind of things that might benefit from physiotherapy, back and neck pain, et cetera. But mental health was the single biggest one. And of course, I think my perception in speaking to clinicians, and Lisa, I'm sure you'll have a view on this as well, is that there can be a bit of a misunderstanding amongst some people, that being off work, you need to be off work to help you recover from your mental health condition, whereas actually, I think the clinical evidence would say, stay in work, keep your social connection, keep your routine, keep everything that's good about work, is the best, the best scenario. So what we need to try and do also is get some kind of understanding from clinicians and the public, that if people are seeking sick notes for mental health-related conditions, actually think really carefully before just signing it off for two weeks, three weeks, six weeks, whatever it is, and actually try and work with them. Refer the person to the work and health coach, let the work and health coach work with the individual to try and overcome it, and hopefully keep them in employment. I think that would be a really good outcome, if we could succeed in that through this programme.
Yeah, I think that's a brilliant point David makes, and it underscores, doesn't it? You know, traditionally, sometimes we've seen a dichotomy between health and wealth, and too often policymakers have ignored health, because no, we need to focus on financial issues or budget issues. But your point is just underline the fact that, you know, we need to, if we can create places for people to wear, which are conducive to better wellbeing, physical health, and of course, mental health, then actually, when we create those healthier workplaces, companies retain staff, they see less sickness absence, and it's therapeutic, as you said, David, for the person. Because we know one of the biggest drivers in, in the research literature of poor mental health is social isolation, and what better way to become socially isolated than, you know, how many people say, actually, I like going into work, because I just like to see people and, you know, enjoy the crack of just being in an office. So I think it's really incumbent on, on society to strive towards work being a healthier experience for people. And the more we do that, as I said, not only will health improve, but wealth will improve as well. Just add one question on the report. On page 21, on the table, it says, increase in the number of residents economically inactive in the labour market. Is, is that right? Am I failing to get my head around something here? Oh, thank God. No, I just thought, I thought, I don't understand, yeah, that, in that case, that's fine, and I'm really sorry, in that case, I've drawn attention to it in a meeting, but, hey, we all make them. But no, that, that makes sense, and obviously, the outcomes in those tables are fundamental, aren't they? So yeah, I just want to echo, well done, you know, and those guys, you know, you guys who are coordinating so many moving parts of what is a big, big strategy are doing a brilliant job. So it's going to be exciting to see how it progresses.
Thank you, Lisa. So just going back to, yes, the, the distribution which we have, for example, musculoskeletal, which is sort of at the top of the list, it's also very generalised again, because, for example, arthritis, which is, you know, very understated and under researched, underfunded condition, medical condition, where people are waiting, if you look at the long waiting lists in the Q trust, you know, people waiting for surgeries, for example, and then they're waiting to go back to work. So that is something on the musculoskeletal conditions also plays a part. Now, high BMI, so when we look into our way forward now, strategy document, you know, weight management, high BMI is directly related to stress and anxiety as well, because it leads to diseases, and that's another thing which I think for us would be good subject to work on as we are, as we go along. And there are so many medications, and there's so much more come into the market currently, you know, how people are being helped from the primary care practices. And going back to the fit note, yes, so there is a lot more potential for the training at the, the healthcare side, because it is a practice of easy way out, you know, so someone does not, sometimes we don't put that collateral thinking in, that when you sign somebody off, how it is going to impact around them. For example, you know, the workplace, their family, some people are self-employed as well, so all those things, I think it has to be done very carefully with due diligence, and at what level? Is it at the first contact, or is it at the specialised level? I think this is what, that there is a potential for us to think as partners, that how we can work on it. And we next have Worcestershire Pharmaceutical Needs Assessment 2025. And can I invite Matthew Fung, Consultant in Public Health, and we've got Dr Heidi Bowring, Public Health Registrar, ST3, thank you so much, and I'll hand over to you now.
Thank you very much, councillor Bell, for the introduction. So this is a summary report that we're going to be talking through of the PNA 2025. As many of you know, the Health and Wellbeing Board has a duty to publish a PNA every three years, and this is that year where we need to publish a PNA by the 1st of October, which is just in a couple of days' time, hence coming to this meeting today. So Heidi is going to be talking through the summary, and has led through the majority of this work, so thank you very much, Heidi, for all of your work on this. It's taken over a year in development and, and in kind of preparation to get to this point, so it's a huge piece of work. So we would like the Health and Wellbeing Board to review the summary and recommendations, and delegate final approval for publication to the PNA Working Group. So that's the objective for today, but at this point, I'm going to hand over to Heidi to take you through the summary. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, so my name is Heidi Bowring, I'm a Public Health Registrar at the council currently, and as Matt said, I've been leading on this piece of work, which is the PNA produced on behalf of the Health and Wellbeing Board, and due to be published within a few days, hopefully. Now, the PNA is a statutory document, the last one was produced in 2022, and it plays a vital role in shaping how pharmaceutical services are delivered across the county. And the aim of it is to assess the current provision, identify any gaps in service provision, and also to make any recommendations. And this is to ensure that the, the services meet the health needs of the population. So it will be used by commissioners to guide decisions about applications and commissioning. So it was produced in line with the 2013 regulations. Lots of different pieces of data were analysed, so specifically had a look at mapping of pharmacies, travel times and service provision, an assessment of local service provision, including opening times, and also consideration of the health needs and demographics of the local population. So this is our JSNA data. Now, there was quite a significant engagement process as well, where we sought the perspectives of the public, but also pharmacy contractors, and we were lucky to have funding to conduct focus groups with lesserhood groups within the community. Now, when the document was produced, it underwent a statutory 60-day consultation, and feedback was collected, and a consultation report was put together, and I believe you have access to that. Now, as I said, data was collected from a variety of different sources, but the process overall was overseen by a steering group, and this included representatives from multiple different agencies, but including ourselves, the public health team, NHSE, the LPC, the LNC, Health Watch, and the ICB. And it is important to note as well that this, this work was a collaborative approach with Herefordshire Council, so the work was, was closely aligned with, with what were they conducted as well. Now, I won't go too in depth about the key findings, because I appreciate at the start of the document, which you have access to, there is an executive summary, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. Just to summarise, currently, there's 109 pharmaceutical providers within Worcestershire, so that's made up of 88 community pharmacies and 21 dispensing GP practices. We do know that there's been a 6% reduction since the 2022 PNA, and we do know that Malvern Hills has lost four of these pharmacies. However, overall access to pharmacies is generally good. We know that 100% of residents live within a 20-minute drive of a pharmacy, and 86% lie within a 30-minute public transport journey. And assessment of service provision across the area shows advanced services are generally well-covered. So the guidance doesn't specify specifically what would class as a gap in service provision, but as a steering group, we agreed some criteria. Now, these are open to interpretation, and each area might have interpreted these slightly different, but the three main points that we agreed on was that most residents should be within a 20-minute drive of a pharmacy during normal working hours, so 100% of our population meet this. Most residents should be able to access a provider within a 20-minute drive in the evening and on Saturdays, and consider that as 30 minutes for rural areas. So we know that 96% of the population are within a 20-minute drive after 7pm, and this increases to 100% when we increase the drive time to 30 minutes. We also identified that most residents should be able to access a pharmaceutical provider within a 30-minute drive on a Sunday, and we know that 98% of the population are within a 20-minute drive. Engagement work indicated overall high satisfaction with community pharmacies, people were happy with the accessibility and professional staff. There were some concerns about opening hours, long waits, and transport issues, and also there were some issues relating to awareness around around additional pharmacy services that offered, in addition to dispensing. The document makes a number of key recommendations, and these are split into ICB-wide ones and Worcestershire-specific ones. In summary, that you should all have access to in the document, but just to summarise, so they're looking at raising public awareness and trust in pharmacy services, making sure that these are aligned with local health priorities, improving evening access to community pharmacies and simplifying the commissioning processes, and ensuring privacy, accessibility and tailored communication. So in summary, we know that Worcestershire has good overall access to pharmaceutical services. We did not identify any gaps within provision. There are a number of recommendations that are made at the end of the document. We are, we will be presenting this work to the Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee, and I think that's in a couple of weeks' time. So that will be done with the LPC and the ICB. So we'll be able to answer detailed questions at that point. And ongoing, there is a steering group to continue the work that was started and that will continue through until the next PNA and hopefully onwards. So thank you very much. Matt, I don't know if you had anything to add to that or if we're happy to take questions.
That's great. Thanks very much, Heidi. Really, really good summary. Hopefully, that's made sense to you as a, you know, an overview of the PNA document, which is very extensive. Really happy for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. That was a very comprehensive report on PNA, and thank you, Matt. Any questions? Yes, councillor Bowen.
Hi. Can you just clarify for me again in terms of the driving times? Did I hear correctly that it was twenty minutes for urban areas, but thirty minutes for rural areas?
Yes, so it's twenty-minute drive. Sorry, it depends what hours we're talking about. So within usual working hours, Monday to Friday, that was twenty-minute drive for the whole population. And we did meet that for a hundred percent of the population. But was your question relating to out-of-hours?
Yeah, so it's around rural communities. And certainly, I represent a rural community, the Tembry and the local villages. And I know some of our villages struggle with their access to pharmacies, Clifted upon team, for example. So I was just trying to understand it. I probably misheard or misunderstood. It sounded as though you have different criteria for urban areas and rural areas for certain times of day. And I just wonder why that is.
I think we sort of accepted that Worcestershire being a fairly rural population, there are going to be differences between the travel times for the urban populations compared to the rural populations. So we did specify criteria and we did, we did increase the length of time that we would expect for travelling for those in rural areas, just as we would expect that. That being said, we said thirty minutes for rural areas on the evening and on Saturdays. But actually, I'll just read out here because I've got it in front of me now. When we look at a thirty-minute drive time, a hundred percent of the population can access within that time. So that's regardless of whether urban or rural, that's taken into account both. So we know that everyone can access pharmacies out of hours within a thirty-minute drive time.
Okay, so my play would be for you to revisit that. Because in our villages, if you have an elderly person, for example, in winter, along country lanes, actually, in some ways, I would say they need it closer than somebody in an urban area. So, you know, I'm just going to leave that with you. It's not my area of expertise. I can only speak from the experience of my community.
Yeah, I completely understand that. And it's something we discussed within the steering group as well. And I think we had to find a way to standardise and assess this for the population. But we fully appreciate there's going to be specific groups of people that might need different things. And we did consider walking times and public transport times as well, but we agreed that they would be ideal, but not essential. So really, we were looking at the driving times. But I completely understand your point. I don't know, Matt, if you have anything to add.
Were you going to come in, Lisa?
Oh, okay, sorry.
Was I poised? Always poised, yeah. No, I think councillor Bowen makes a great point. And yeah, I think what you're saying, councillor Bowen, if I understand it rightly, is we shouldn't be dropping our ambitions in terms of travel time for rural areas. People in rural areas, you know, shouldn't have to necessarily by default accept a longer travel time. And as you said, you know, sometimes the need is just as urgent, if not more, given the higher propensity for social isolation sometimes in rural areas. So I think it's a really good point and something we can obviously do because setting the standard is within our control. So, yeah, absolutely take that on, I think. Thank you. Yes, go on, please.
Councillor Andrew Wilmot, same area, actually. One of the things I noticed right at the start of the report was the six percent service reduction since 2022. Looking into the figures, that means seven pharmacies dropped out in Worcestershire. And of particular interest to me, in the Molvan Hills District Council area, four of those were in that area. Did you have any assessment of why the dropout rate? I'm presuming it's financial viability. And if that's the case, what's the outlook? That seems a concerning trend, if it is one. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. You're absolutely right. It is a concerning trend. And this is part of a complex picture, I would say, in terms of financial viability that you talked about briefly, the workforce, which is pressured and fewer pharmacists around them perhaps we would like, consolidations of pharmacies, takeovers of groups of pharmacies by multinationals who then immediately close them down. The picture is complex and varied. We obviously have some mechanisms and levers that we can use. However, money is pretty much, you know, fixed. There is not more money flowing into pharmacy services, broadly speaking. And that makes the situation quite difficult. You are right to flag it, though. You know, there have been a reduction in pharmacies in Molvan Hills. We've kind of stated that. And some of our longer opening pharmacies have reduced their hours from the last PNA as well, down to a change in the national contract. I suppose this is something, it's an area that we need to keep a really close eye on. And we need to understand when and where future closures and openings are taking place. The reality is that we're not going to be able to get a pharmacy into every village and every rural outpost that we have. But what we do need to ensure is that there is adequate and, you know, as good access as possible, given the constraints and given the workforce and many in the system that we have. And that's going to be the theme of the conversation at HOSC, where, as Heidi mentioned, we'll have the ICB and the local pharmaceutical committee, who represents the interests of pharmacies across Worcestershire and Herefordshire and Warwickshire as well, with us to answer those types of questions. Much like the rest of the NHS, though, you know, it is, it is in a, you know, a restricted system of, as I have mentioned, finance and resource and, you know, personnel essentially. And it's about establishing the best deployment or distribution of that limitation amongst the whole of our population. But something that we will be keeping an eye on over the course of this next three years.
Yeah, such an important point that you make, such an important issue. And it's a national one. I'm seeing data here. The number of community pharmacies in England has dropped below ten thousand for the first time in twenty years. And I think Matt covered them, but the factors are numerous. I think financial is definitely listed, increased workload, large chain exits as well. So some of those bigger pharmacy chains, Lloyd's Pharmacy, for example, drove a lot of closures and consolidations. And also, rising costs of medications is a factor as well. So I think you're absolutely right. This is something to really watch carefully, both nationally, yes, but also locally. Because, you know, if we connect what you've said back to councillor Bowen's point and the importance of a local community pharmacy to people in our community who often experience the greatest health challenges and the greatest obstacles towards getting those health challenges met, it's a really important issue to keep a close eye on and address. So thank you. Important point.
Thank you. Yes, Julie. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Julian Burlett, Chief Clinical Strategy Officer at Worcestershire Acute NHS Trust. Coming, looking at this very much from my point of view, sitting in the acute trust, with all of the pressures that we have on urgent and emergency care services. Clearly, pharmacy services should and could be an integral part in helping to reduce demand on both acute trust services, but also from a primary care point of view, from out-of-hours GP services. There's a particular initiative around pharmacy first, but thinking slightly more generally around provision of pharmacy services, particularly in evenings, weekends, out-of-hours. Did your survey look at the provision of pharmacy services in evenings and weekends across the population to try to help to ensure that pharmacy services were doing their bit to help manage urgent and emergency demand? I suppose is one question. And then, is there any, is there any more we could do collectively to harness the support and the use of pharmacy services around urgent and emergency care?
Yeah, thank you for your question. And I think that raises an important point because you're right. Since the previous PNA, pharmacy first is a new scheme and that's something that we discuss within the document. In terms of looking at times and access to pharmacy services, this was mainly done in relation to the essential services, so those that all pharmacies must offer. So there wasn't, we didn't look specifically at access to advanced services. So these are ones that may be considered optional, out of hours specifically. We did not look at that specifically. I think, I think it's hard to directly quantify how, how the provision of these services might impact on the acute trust activity. Certainly, I agree that the increasing services offered within pharmacies is sort of taking or aiming to take a burden from primary care into community pharmacies. But I don't think I could say specifically that we, that we looked at how this might impact the acute trusts.
I can come in. Matt, you wanted to go first or? Okay. So I'll just build on that point and then also on councillor Bowen's point. And you're going to hate me because, again, I'm a clinician. So I'm going to give you a different perspective here because I work out of hours and I do remote consultations. And I always do have a challenge, especially on Sundays, out of hours. And, for example, I can sort out the problem on my online consultation absolutely then and there. And where I get stuck because there is no pharmacy at that point, especially on Sundays, there are restricted hours. And then, for example, when I call a patient in a care home and they need antibiotics at that point of time, there's again a glitch there. So the care providers, the care workers, the team in that care home themselves cannot go to the pharmacy. And, you know, so there is no means of getting those antibiotics to this particular person. And same for, as we said, there are elderly people, you know, who are living on their own. They don't drive and out of hours, sometimes late in the night, like I call people about one o'clock or two AM as well. And they have no means of going out. Now, from healthcare perspective, especially for me because I'm emergency medicine, so if there is something thirty minutes that I'm thinking it's coming from Birmingham, you know, it's that much of a distance for anything related to healthcare. So there is a potential, I can leave some questions with you. Of course, the Sunday thing out of hours is a problem. And then also, when we do remote consultations, some simple medication, for example, specialised cochodamol, which is available on prescription as a painkiller. And, you know, for someone to go about thirty minutes or even if it is not available because it's a Sunday. So there is a, there is a problem. And we end up sending sometimes those patients to the acute trust because they can't get the medication. So as simple as that. And then also the online, there is, because I do have interaction with pharmacies across online prescriptions when we send as clinicians to pharmacies. There is a very limited practice on that, you know. You must go there in person with that prescription and then only they will dispense. But if a clinician sends, you know, we can easily send an online prescription over the email and things like that, but it just doesn't work. So system could be more streamlined and maybe going forward as part of your work. The other thing which I want to leave you, there is a potential, you know, if you would consider when there is a local government reorganisation. So how your travel times are going to look, especially for bordering areas, your travel times may reduce. So that's another thing. And, yeah, the other thing, the potential is like over-the-counter medication. So the whole point for us is to go less to the pharmacy than to the more. So there is the public education. There are so many medications now which are actually available over the counter. Antacids and few more things have come on, eye ointments and stuff like that. I am not going to educate here, but I'm just saying that we can, there is a bit of potential for education. People need to go less to the pharmacy because to take a prescription, but rather some, there are so many other things which are available over the counter from, for example, Tesco's and people like that who, or other people, you know, the pharmacies or supermarkets which are open. So they can just help themselves. But, yeah, there are a few gaps there which we would think can be looked into.
Thank you for those comments, councillor Bell. I agree, you know, looking at different ways to access medicines is really important. And that's actually one of the recommendations around education of when and where to use pharmacies and how to access. And as you say, other alternative ways, OTCs, I think is a really important point. Except for the fairly sizable cohort who have free prescriptions, who would still, you know, choose to go to a pharmacy potentially. I think, I mean, I wouldn't want to preempt the conversation at HOSC with our other colleagues here from the LPC, Local Pharmaceutical Committee, and the ICB. But I suspect that there could be conversations about what we want to commission locally, what is permitted to be commissioned locally, how can we change the current structure and setup of our pharmaceutical commissioning. So there are some quite big conversations to take forwards, kind of within the scope of what we're able to do. But the comments today have been incredibly helpful, so thank you for the debate.
Thank you. Yeah, Brinny, I just want to say, well done and thank you. Absolutely huge piece of work. And this discussion was really rich as well, with some great points made which we can take back. So firstly, well done on a brilliant piece of work. And also, and you're going to hate me for this, just want to say well done to Heidi because she's just passed her final exam membership of the Faculty of Public Health. Obviously, Matt would argue it's all in the educational supervisor and that's what makes the difference. But despite that, you passed. And, yeah, well done. We're so very proud of you. And thank you for delivering on such a huge and complex piece of work.
Thank you so much, Lisa. And, yeah, thank you to Matt as well for his great supervision for this piece of work. So thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. And Matt, I guess you've got double access to the next thing. Yeah, next thing on the agenda for us is Health Protection Group Overview. So if I can invite Matt again to talk about this, please.
Thank you again, councillor Bell, and welcome to Vicky Mostyn from Thank you again, councillor Bell, and welcome to Vicky Mostyn from the team. So we're going to be doing again a double act on this particular piece. And this is an update on the Health Protection Group. Again, many of you may know that we have the Health Protection Group as a subgroup of the Health and Wellbeing Board. And again, for the recommendations are to note the progress and work of the Health Protection Group, capability of the HPG to plan and prepare for future events, such as outbreaks of disease, and the work of the Worcestershire Public Health Health Protection Team. So the HPG was set up in November 2022, is, has a whole host of members as part of that group, many of whom are represented here. And we meet essentially quarterly to talk together and to plan and to strategise. And we do have a health protection strategy, which I presented last year to, to the Health and Wellbeing Board. I'm not going to go through all of the, the strategy again, is in the appendices, the priorities are listed there, which takes a life course approach, going from kind of starting well, living well, ageing well, and building community resilience and improving equity. So all of that's built into the health protection strategy. So on to the seventh paragraph. And this is around the ability of our system to respond to outbreaks of infectious disease. And we do have an infectious disease service provided by the Your Health, Your Being team. And that is a, it's linked to the couple of vans that you, you may have seen going around Worcestershire and the news, et cetera. They, they kind of do all, all kinds of healthcare and health improvement and vaccination screening, but also responding to outbreaks of infectious disease. So that's kind of a great capability that we have. Just on to MMR uptake, we have excess uptake in Worcestershire, generally speaking. We're in the top 20% nationally. But we don't want to be complacent. We want to kind of hit the World Health Organisation targets of getting 95% of children aged five vaccinated. But the coverage of the second dose for children isn't quite hitting that target at this point. And we want to improve that as much as possible, particularly given that we, a couple of years ago, had quite a, a surge in measles cases. And in 2024, so last year, we set out to run some pop-up clinics to improve our MMR uptake rate. We are planning to repeat that again because we had quite a lot of success. Hundreds of unvaccinated children and slightly older people as well got vaccinated through that particular campaign. And during January to March next year, we're going to be running an even bigger pop-up campaign where we're going to be expanding through libraries and family hubs, et cetera, to vaccinate as many people as possible. The other thing worth noting is that next year from January, the MMR vaccine is going to be changing to the MMRV to include chickenpox within that vaccination. And that's the MMRV vaccination, as I say, which will hopefully encourage even more people to come along and get vaccinated, you know, being, being protected then against measles, mumps and rubella, as well as chickenpox. I think that's a really, really great kind of development. Through the group as well, we also talk about screening and immunisations. We generally have great rates, but again, it's, it's such a key and fundamental part of public health and prevention, that we really do want to keep that as high as possible across the whole breadth of screening and immunisations programmes. Air quality, again, this is kind of rattling through. Air quality is another area of work that we look at. There's lots of potential here, particularly using real time data that we have running at the moment, but using it in, 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 in practice, getting people to potentially change their behaviour based on this kind of real time air quality data that's coming through. So you can almost imagine a point where people sign up to an alert system, telling them that air quality is good or bad, and changing their behaviour based on that particular data. So there's a, a lot of potential there. And at this point, I'm going to hand over to Vic just to talk through the next few items.
Thank you. I can't reach four foot eleven. I'm Vicky Mostyn. I'm a senior public health practitioner. I work in the public health team within Worcestershire County Council. As part of the Health Protection Group, what we tend to do is that we forecast to identify what viruses or infections might be of issue to us going forward. And then we will undertake activities to try to reduce that. So for instance, the MMR vaccination, pop-up clinics that Matt has just discussed is one of the things that we're doing. We'll also try and get ahead of the game with things like flu, common winter illnesses, and we'll usually start planning ahead for those about 12 months in advance. We've recently just developed a local outbreak and instance guidance. So this is done with myself, the Health Protection Team, and the Worcestershire County Council Emergency Preparedness, Resilience and Response Team. Previously to that, we used to have a flu pandemic plan, but we've actually decided to do just a, a local outbreak and instance guidance, rather than just focusing on flu because I think we've learned that COVID wasn't flu. And having a guidance that encompasses all different outbreaks was needed. We've also just recently done some work, or we're still doing some work, with the Local Resilience Forum to help develop their resilience plans as well for outbreaks and incidents. And that's in draft version at the moment. Some of the projects that we've done, we have done a very short project, it was only three months, and we were able to do it from funding provided to us by NHS England. And that was looking at increasing vaccinations for children who are in care. We noted that there were lower rates of uptake of vaccinations for children in care. Like I said, it was only for three months, but what we were able to do was increase those uptake by about 1%. So we, we'll take that as a win. That was really good to see that we could do that. And then I'm going to hand back over to Matt for the sexual health.
Thanks, Vic. Sexual health, we commission from public health. So it's one of our statutory services. And we've recently started, well, last year, a new five-year contract, which is going well. The, the service reviews well, it's accessed well, has some really good outcomes. And yet, we obviously track through the data and the, the emerging issues and threats, I guess, to, to sexual health, one of which is listed here, paragraph 24, around HIV and syphilis. We note that rates particularly of HIV are increasing locally, and not necessarily in the groups that you traditionally associate with HIV. We, we, we've seen actually later diagnoses of HIV in groups like heterosexual women presenting later in disease. And that's not a trend that we've seen historically. So what we're going to be doing is something called circuit breaker testing. We really want to diagnose people as early as possible. Obviously, prevention is, is key. Prevention is key. But if people already have sexually transmitted infections, we want to be diagnosing those as early in, in the infection as possible so that they can start receiving treatment as early as possible. And so we will be running the circuit breaker testing, testing specific groups, making testing, testing more available. And yeah, getting the message out as much as we possibly can. So, you know, our message really is, if people have changed sexual partner, if they deem themselves to be at risk, get tested, visit a sexual health centre, go onto our website, order a, a free test kit. It's free, confidential, easy to access, goes to your home. So that's really the type of key message that we're going to be sending out over these next few months, just to try and get those rates down and get people diagnosed as early as possible. Back to you, Vic.
So I'm sure you're aware that one of the things that we've got in Worcestershire are two prisons. We have Longlarton, which is a CATE prison. So people tend to spend a lot longer time there than they do our other prison, Huell. Huell is what's considered a local prison, so, and a remand prison. So people who are sentenced to Huell tend to have been sentenced from our local courts. So we, the, the issue with prisons is it's a close facility, people are in close contact. And there's also a lot of people with social risks as well. So therefore, they're more at risk of having infectious diseases. So we do a lot of work with our local prisons to gain assurances that they're aware of how to manage outbreaks and to also provide education and guidance for if they do have an outbreak. In recently, there have been some cases of strep A within one of our local prisons. This was usually found in the throat or in wounds. There's actually been an increase in strep A overall. But we were able to identify that there was this increase of strep A in our prison. And following that, we worked with NHS England, we actually did an onsite visit to have a look at the setting and to look at their infection prevention and control measures. We also provided them with advice and education on how they could reduce the risks of strep A. And thankfully, that, those outbreaks of strep A have reduced now in the prisons. We also have a monthly meeting with the prisons, just again, to provide health protection, education, and to help them with any health protection initiatives so that we can reduce the risk of there being outbreaks within that community. And also to help them undertake vaccination programmes within prisons and to provide staff training. We've also helped the prisons create pathways, such as a TB pathway, so that they're on board and that they're screening for people with TB when they first enter the prison to again, reduce the risk of there being a TB outbreak. And we also attend the prison's local delivery board meetings. And that's where we can ask questions and again, provide advice and just keep, keep ahead of the game and to see what, what's happening in the prisons and to be able to offer any advice and guidance if there are any current concerns. And we're also working collaboratively with the prisons at the moment to develop a pathway for people when they're released from prison. This would most likely be Huell because from Longlarton, people tend to be, go to step down, so they don't tend to get released into the community. But the pathway we're looking at is to ensure that there's continuity of care. So when somebody is, does leave prison, they are picked up by the right healthcare professionals once they're released, so that, that there's continuity of care and nobody's slipping through the net. I'm just going to go through a few instances that we've managed in the last 12 months since the last time we met. I won't go through them all, but I just thought I'd pick out some of the larger outbreaks. So as, as discussed, we've seen an increase in strep A in a local prison. We had some suspected cases of claydwin MPOCs, which has settled down now. But I'm sure you remember a year ago that the claydwin MPOCs, we started, we were starting to see cases. We've dealt with flu A cases in schools. We've also dealt with avian flu in birds, some suspected food poisoning in local restaurants. We've also supported norovirus outbreaks in prisons. Matt and I have been involved when there's been suspected measles cases in schools and nurseries. We've been involved with the fires and the risk of asbestos. We've helped manage with complex TB cases within our local prisons and within the community actually, and also eye gas and gas outbreaks. Gas again is from strep A. And we've also supported our environmental health with any environmental health issues. We also support adult social care. So we liaise with any care homes that have had outbreaks. And we provide advice to help them so that they can manage any outbreaks when they occur. Hand washing, we've developed a clean hands, safe hands, hand washing campaign. We launched that in 2022 on the back of the advice that was given during COVID. We wanted to ensure that that advice continued and people didn't forget the importance of hand washing. We've got a website and the link is in your papers. And within that website is lots of resources which people can download. There's some specific ones that are around schools. We go to events with our UV lamp so that people can actually see how effective they wash their hands. And we are about to start going to education settings as well, to schools and nurseries to teach hand washing and take our UV lamp so the children can have a look, have a look and wash their hands. And it's an interactive, so it's a bit, hopefully, a bit, bit more engaging than just reading a leaflet. So planning for influenza, we tend to plan for flu about 12 months in advance. So we start planning of how we're going to promote the message of flu vaccination round, well, at the end of the previous flu season. So we've met with the ICB and other colleagues and partners from other organisations to have a look at how we can promote vaccination for flu. We've engaged with Vax UK, which is the school vaccination provider. And they, this year, are going to provide a webinar to education settings so that they can answer any questions that any teachers or may have about the flu vaccination. TB, we've, in the last couple of years, we've been quite involved in TB. Worcestershire and the UK actually has seen an increase of TB over the last few years. And so we've been doing some work around that. We, one of the issues within Worcestershire is that because we are considered a low instance area, there isn't any latent TB screening apart from certain groups. So latent TB is basically, layman's term is dormant TB. So it's not infectious. But because we don't screen for it, unless it's specific groups, we don't necessarily know exactly how many people have latent TB. So we, we've been working on the importance of people recognising the signs and symptoms of active TB so that can be worked on. We've been working with the ICB and other partners on the Getting It Right First Time Review. And we've been able to share our local experiences and our best practice as part of that review. And we also, in our, in our team, facilitate the TB Network Meeting, which brings together our colleagues from different organisations so that we can look at how we can tackle TB and what we can do next to reduce the risk. So I'm just scrolling down the paper. So producing guidance and updates to education in early year settings, we regularly, if there's any updates around health protectors or infectious diseases or vaccinations, we regularly provide guidance to our schools via the school's bulletin. We also produce a PAC twice a year. So we produce a PAC in the summer, and we would produce a PAC in the winter to advise them about how they can manage outbreaks and what to do if there are any outbreaks. The reason we do two, a summer and a winter one, is because we often find different outbreaks in the summer compared to the winter. So we like to do the, the two so that they've got the information at hand within the schools. And I think that is it from me. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Vic. Really happy for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky and Matt. Any questions from councillor Bowen? Yes?
Hello. You're probably not surprised to hear me ask about the 1% increase in vaccinations in children in care. I'd just like to know how you did it.
That one, not that button. The other one. Well, we had some funding from NHS England. And what that funding enabled the team to do was increase its capacity. And it was as simple as that. So they were actually enabled to employ somebody. And that person was able to focus, they looked at the data, they had a look at the children that hadn't had their vaccinations, and that was their job. They focused on that child and they literally visited them and vaccinated. It was based around the annual review that children in care have. So it's, it's as simple as that. It was an increase in capacity.
So how do we get to repeat that?
That's not one I can answer, because it's not our...
It's, it's a, it's a good question. And it's a group that, you know, will have poor outcomes if we don't make a concerted effort. This came, as we saw, as Vicky said, of specific funding. We're going to have to think about how we can resource that in future years in, if there's not another funding round. At the moment, as you probably know, NHS England is, is being moved to a different kind of structure and organisation. What happens to the pots of money that they've been putting out? I don't quite know at this point in time. Others around the room, David, et cetera, may have more information on that. But I think it's something that we need to keep our eye on, absolutely.
I think you're absolutely right, councillor Bowen. It, it's incredibly poor. It's incredibly important, and I think we just need to resolve to find a way. So obviously, we'll hope for external funding. It's an important work, and I for one will have a real moan if we don't get it. But then we will find a way to make it happen, because it's just cost-effective, simple as that. So. Thank you. Any other questions, please? Thank you, Vicky and Matt. So I'm just going, I have one question for you for winter planning, so for, to reduce admissions to the hospital. Flu is one which we always do every year. Is there anything different we are doing or as going forward? I remember Lisa mentioned to me that going little forward for us for flu vaccinations for people, you know, who can't access flu vaccinations, especially our elderly, or, you know, they can't go to the clinic or they can't go to the practice. So we are possibly having some outreach to anything else we are looking at or...
As Vicky mentioned, we work with the system around flu planning. We work with employers around offering flu vaccination, the trysts, et cetera, and also with general practice to try and vaccinate or offer vaccination at least to people who are clinically vulnerable, who have demonstrated previous admission to hospital, who have not been previously vaccinated, or those with LTCs, long-term conditions, who remain at risk but haven't been vaccinated. We are doing what we can and working with a few different pilots this year to see whether we can get those particularly vulnerable individuals vaccinated, because we recognise from the data and from our numbers that there is a risk group that could vastly benefit. So when that's worked through this year, we'll be reporting back to the system and to this board as well, if it's of interest, the outcome of that particular project work.
Thank you. Sexual health. So looking at the figures, the engagement is reduced, isn't it, comparing to how many people engage into the sexual health service? But looking at the trends, as you've mentioned about HIV, and that's going up. So we did do a pilot in the acute trust, well, we are still doing it, along with the sexual health, that all the bloods, which we were taking, any bloods in the trust, we did take a sample for HIV as well, so, which gave us good results and which were, you know, some of the results coming up from the, to see the trends. Also, just to mention about MMRV, so it's a really good addition for our children to have that, and it's part of the best start in life, isn't it, if we get chickenpox involved? But we also need to be positively mindful of, you know, relocation, migration, travelling, people coming in and out, children coming into the country, children going out, travelling and coming back. So how that information, because lots of people or children may not be vaccinated in their own country, but when they travel and then, you know, especially TB or adult, in case of adults. So how that awareness is diffused around, for example, where they can access that service? For, I'm not sure if airport is one of the places, you know, when people come in, they know if you think you could be having any TB symptoms or, you know, you need some vaccine and then... Because we are seeing an increase in trend of TB, especially in the urban areas now, not only in metros but middle-tier as well, there's a huge rise in the TB now.
With the MMR vaccination pop-up clinics we did last year, it was really promising because a lot of the people who did attend, even if they hadn't had the vaccination, people who were born from outside the UK, they came with their red book to ask, have I had it? And we welcome those people as much as people who hadn't had the vaccination. And yeah, there are a lot of people who did attend those pop-up clinics where their children had, it was because the vaccinations they had in the country they were born in didn't match ours. So that was quite promising that they came and attended. The beauty of the pop-up clinics is the locations that we hold them. So we hold them in libraries and family hubs, and also the times as well, because it's more accessible, so weekends, school holidays. But it was quite positive, wasn't it, last time? And it was really good that folk come with their red book as well, just to understand, have I had it? But that is one of the issues, is that our vaccination schedule doesn't necessarily reflect the country's vaccination schedule, so they have to catch up.
I think you've made some really good comments, councillor Bowen, and a lot of this is about education as well. I don't know if we did a small poll across this room, how many people could name all the immunisations that we should have at each stage of life? I think it gets quite confusing, to be honest. So really clear education and communications are so important in this conversation as well.
Thank you, Matt. Yes, Lisa?
I just want to refer back to the HIV conversation. I just think that's really so important, and so I just wanted to emphasise to everyone in all of your networks, help us promote the importance of early HIV testing. If you're tested early, while your CD4 count, your immunity is still good, then the medication and the treatment can help you have a long, healthy life. But if you wait and wait and wait and put it off and don't have a HIV test, then that becomes more difficult. And the reasons people delay HIV testing are varied. For some people, we mentioned, for example, people coming new into the country, maybe HIV testing wasn't as accessible in the country they've come from. But for others, there's almost a contrasting effect. Some people avoid HIV tests because they're not concerned about HIV. HIV is a really serious infection, and of course, we don't worry about it as much as a society may be now as we used to, because the treatments have become very effective. But that's no good if you're not on the treatment. So let's not lose all of our worry about HIV, because if you're not on treatment, that virus will have its effect on you and it can become serious. So going early for treatment means that you can access, sorry, going early for testing means you can access treatment early and live that long, healthy life. Ironically, the other reason people don't come for testing is the other extreme, they're terrified. You know, they're worried about what a HIV result will mean. But as I said, if you get a HIV test and get on to treatment early enough, you can live a long and healthy life. So all in all, if there's any reason to believe you may have become infected, go and get a HIV test. I really want to emphasise that, and I think as a system throughout the voluntary sector, NHS, local government, everywhere, let's really promote that as a system.
And just to reiterate that tests can be obtained through the walk-in clinics, or you can go to the Worcestershire Integrated Sexual Health Services Wish online and order a test to your home. So two really clear ways that you can get tested.
Thank you, Vicky, Matt, and thank you for the report. It's a lot of hard work gone in, and there's so much work being done there. Thank you for your contribution. So next on the agenda, I think we are on time. So Worcestershire Integrated Commissioning Executive Officers Group update, and can I invite David and team? Thank you.
Hello again. Good. Probably say even less about this than I did about the last item, to be honest. So ISOG, Integrated Care Executive Officers Group, it's the joint group. Again, it's another kind of joint venture between the NHS and local government, which, again, I will reinforce the essence of the relationship that we have locally that enables us to do this type of thing. So it's the joint group that oversees our joint commissioning, where there's a benefit to bringing health and NHS services together for the population and doing it once rather than separately. The services that we commission are then funded through something called a Section 75 agreement. It's a Section 75 of one of the local government acts, I couldn't tell you which year, but it's certainly one of those. And it's worth about £150 million locally, that's what we use jointly to commission these services, of which about sort of 80, 85 million goes through something called the Better Care Fund, which is next on the agenda and which the Health and Wellbeing Board will be very familiar with. So this report is, it's a bit of an annual update really on the latest sort of issues and challenges that ISOG has been dealing with, and it covers a wide range of issues, covering adult services and discharge from hospital, some stuff on community services, some stuff on community equipment store, some public health information in it, and there's a little bit just at the end on the Section 75, which we identified did underspend this year, but that's not to be taken in any sense as a sort of a great position, because there are some long-term cost pressures on the Section 75 that we will need to manage to make sure it doesn't overspend in the next year. Obviously, some of these services relate to things that Mike provides, and children, as I noticed, councillor Bowen's gone and Adam's not here, so we might not be able to pick up any of the more detailed questions around children's services. But Adam has said he's more than happy to provide a written update to Health and Wellbeing Board members if we can answer. And obviously, I'm sure Lisa will be able to answer any questions on the public health schemes that are covered by ISOG. So I think at that point, I'll pause and see if anybody's got any questions.
Thank you, David. Any questions? Lisa, anything from you?
No, no, no. So I just want to touch base on, of course, looking at, there are two things I wanted to talk about. One is about the short-term enhanced domiciliary care service, and that's for the discharge, obviously. And so we look at, there were four patients, and then we extended it, and now we can take six patients, is that right? So is that always being filled? Or, but obviously, there will be so many more patients in the acute trust which are fit to be discharged, but they can't come out. So do your spaces always get taken up and...
Thanks, Chair. We, any one week, have approximately the ability to discharge 130 people from the acute trusts on what we refer to as our Pathway One. It's in the paper here, it says, I think there was a little bit of a typo, it says discharge to access, it should be discharge to assess. So we don't do those assessments in hospital, we do those external to the hospital. So when in one point in time from the mainstream service, we have that ability to, you know, discharge that volume of people from hospital back home. I think the enhanced domiciliary care one was an attempt to try and put more support into people than we would normally, for want of a better phrase, do, with the hope that we could then avoid them having to go into long-term residential or nursing care. So that was the enhancement that we put in place to try and get people back home on that pathway when there was doubts as to whether the mainstream service had the ability to do that. So that's the sort of where we're at, Chair, with that piece of work.
Thank you. And just coming at the back of that, you know, going forward, you have plans that you want to keep it with outsourced providers, or you're going to bring it back to the Worcestershire County Council? So how are we building on the preparation work to train our own people to be able to carry out that work?
So we made a decision last year that by the end of this financial year, that we would be looking to pull back in-house some of the external provision that we had with providers. Why it's taken that long is exactly the fact that we're building the workforce to enable us to do that, and then obviously, that contract will end then with the independent providers or external providers. We're also just in the middle of, at the moment, actually, a piece of, another couple of pieces of work, where we're planning for the next financial year to maybe increase not just from the external provision that we're bringing back in-house, but to go even further in relation to the capacity of the Pathway One service. And we're doing that in two ways. We're actually engaging with an organisation who has got a better rostering system, and our rostering system was up for renewal, so we'll need to reprocure that. And one of the providers that we're currently working with will strongly evidence how we'll just get more provision, more capacity, just purely by doing a better job of locating staff and deploying them where they're needed. But also some potential further investment from the Better Care Fund that David just mentioned to slightly increase the capacity as well. So there's a number of working parts at the moment, but we are trying to focus it on our own in-house sort of provision and service, really. We actually had the adult scrutiny this morning, and we had some reports into there about its effectiveness, and it's over 80% of people that go through the Pathway One reagent service will go on to either have a reduced level of need or have no level of need for long-term care and support. So it is a very valued service.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions? Although I have one more point to make, but any other questions, comments, please? So I can see that there is a challenge about the equipment service, isn't it? So that's where we are struggling. Is there any possibility for us to work with the acute trust to actually borrow these equipment on short term, than us sort of investing in this, buying it?
So the current contract on equipment is actually where we commission with Hereford and Worcestershire Health and Care Trust. So they're the provider, if you like, in that sense, in terms of the equipment service. I think when we've looked at this, and it is being looked at on a monthly basis, so it's been closely monitored because of the effective overspend that we had last year, is that, you know, we provide a really good offer in Worcestershire in terms of some of the equipment that we purchase and commission that arguably maybe other areas don't. So we are looking at what is the offer in Worcestershire, and in some circumstances, we might be revising the level and type of equipment that we can provide via that service. So that's the sort of work that's ongoing at the moment. As I say, folk from finance and the operational side of things are meeting on a monthly basis to keep their eye on that one.
So if there are no questions, then we can move to next item on the agenda, which is Better Care Fund. And I can see, Mark, that's gained yours. Thank you.
It is indeed. Thank you, Chair. So members of the board will remember, I hope, that, in fact, these papers that have come today are almost like a retrospective sign-off of year-end and the Better Care Fund quarter one period. The reason why they come here retrospectively is that the board has actually given ISOG the delegated responsibility for overseeing the Better Care Fund submissions that we are required to make to enable us to receive the funding that we do as a system. And the reason for delegated responsibility is that the reporting system into NHS England doesn't align with our Health and Wellbeing Board frequency, if you like, in that sense. So what you've got before you today now is the sign-off of the Better Care Fund 2425 year-end, which was actually submitted to NHS England on the 5th of June, the sign-off of the Better Care Fund Quarter One reporting template, which was submitted to NHS England on the 15th of August, and note the Quarter One Better Care Fund budget monitoring position in line with national requirements. If you wanted me to say a little bit more about what's in those reports, and I can certainly do that as well. So just in terms of the 2425 end-of-year report, all the Better Care Fund metric goals were achieved, which is obviously a positive outcome, as this wasn't achieved the year before. There was 174,000 overspend on the 2425 budget, which was mainly due to Pathway One, which I just spoke about in terms of our spend around that particular service, seeing an increase in demand of clients through the service requiring double-up care, particularly upon hospital discharge. The overspend was jointly funded by WCC and the ICB, and there is also some carry-forward funds identified from disabled facilities grants. The districts who actually deliver on the grants, we as a local authority, a first-tier local authority, are expected to passport money through for disabled facilities grants to the districts. They've just highlighted that there is a due, the districts have highlighted this is due to committed expenditure on capital works, which will move into 2526. So a commitment's already made in last year, but it won't fall through until this year. That's why this... That's why there's some carry-forward of those funds. And then finally, on the 25/26 Quarter One report, there was nothing particularly to note on this report. The metrics are being reviewed on a quarterly basis with NHS England. There's been some improvement made on discharge delays metric at this point, no changes to other metrics at this stage, and currently forecasting a break even at Quarter One, but noting there are usual pressures in demand and flow on Pathway One and not least of all, the equipment service, Chair, that you mentioned before from the ISOG report.
Thank you, Mark. So in relation to Better Care Fund, any comments or any feedback? And then if not, then we can go ahead and get all those sign-offs done. Yeah, thank you. Forward, and we're almost at the end of it. I think the time-wise, we are good on timing. Any other business from the meeting? Any comments? Yep?
Just want to remind everyone that we've got our Community Stories event coming up soon. Sam, it's 22nd of October at the Cricket Club. What time do you know?
10am.
10am, yeah. So we run these occasionally. We bring together awesome partners from the voluntary community sector and resident groups and we show videos of the stories of the work that they've done in the last year or so. And there's always some brilliant tales of really demonstrating, as we talked about earlier, about what happens when you put resources into the hands of people in Worcestershire and say, what do you want to do? They come up with the most amazing projects that have a direct benefit on health and wellbeing. So Health and Wellbeing Board members are of course invited to come along on the 22nd of October at the Cricket Club.
Thank you, Lisa. So yeah, I mean, I'm thankful and appreciate all your time and hard work, contribution, everyone here in your reports and updates and Democratic Services team as well. So for us, it's really important from Health and Wellbeing Board and all the partners, that the programmes or initiatives we are investing in, they transcend into a system or norm for Worcestershire County and because these projects, people are not projects. So that it almost becomes a system that they enjoy this, you know, health and wellbeing and being safe in and living those independent lives. So that's the initiative we want to work on going forward. So thank you everyone for your time today for the meeting. And just before we go, so I'm just going to talk about future meeting dates. So our next meeting is on 18th of November at 2pm and we do have some private developed meetings in the diary, but if there's anything comes up and then that will become active. Yeah. So thank you everyone and enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you.